I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Meller, could you please call the roll?
Chairman Di Maria.
Here.
Vice Chairman Albrecht.
Here.
Mr. Bushnell.
Kiefer.
Here.
Mrs. Purdy.
Here.
Mrs. Sevesky.
Here.
Mr. Samuel, Mr. Williams.
Here.
Ms. Gabrielle Torres.
Here.
And Ms. Faith Matic.
Here.
Are there additions or deletions to the agenda, Dr. McGorrick?
Yes, we have two. We have a ratification of personnel appointments, resignations, and transfers, and student transfer requests that will be added to the consent agenda.
Thank you. I knew that because it's written right here. Our cool thing. And we have no announcements or spotlights?
Not this evening.
Okay. Does any chairman have a committee report tonight?
Sir?
No. Okay, thank you. And we'll go right to board member comments then. Mrs. Purdy, would you like to start?
Yes, so I guess we have to sort of start on a sad note. I guess by now, most people have gotten the word that we lost one member of our school family, Mr. Suddeth, and there is going to be a memorial this Saturday. Interestingly enough, this tells you how tight-knit this community is. I actually didn't hear first from here in the city of Manassas. I actually heard first from my daughter in Atlanta. He's someone that had an influence in her, and so she's like, "Mom, did I hear this right?" So that'll let you know how many people he has touched over the years, and so I do want to extend the Purdy family's sympathies to the Suddeth family. Now, having said that, I also am aware that tomorrow night kicks off the round of back-to-school nights, so that should be a lot of fun. I know I had a lot of fun, and I'm looking forward to what are exciting things we're going to see this time. I got the biggest kick last year out of the kids singing and the words that they were using and in terms of vocabulary they were learning, so I'm expecting to see other great and wonderful things when we start doing the back-to-school nights. I encourage all parents, this is a great time to get an understanding of what's going to be happening for your child in the coming year, so hopefully we will see you there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Purdy. And Ms. Kiefer?
Thank you. I too want to echo Mrs. Purdy's condolences to the Suddeth family. Just over the course of the last couple days, I feel like I've gotten to know who Barry was as a friend, as a teacher, as a coach, as a man, as a husband, as a father. So with that being said, condolences to his family during this tough time. Second, I would like to welcome, again, Faith, we met last time, but Gabby too, our student liaisons for this year. I can't wait to be sitting up here and learning from them. Yesterday, I had the privilege of attending the convocation with all of the teachers, staff, central office, everybody was there. It was quite inspiring, it was quite energetic, and I feel pretty darn excited myself to start the school year. I would just challenge everybody that's out there, whether you're a parent, a grandparent, a community member, a school board member, a city councilman or woman, anybody, whoever you are, find a way to get involved in our kids' education. Anything, any bit of advice you can give a child this year is a bit of advice that helps carry their education outside the classroom. So please think about our kids as they're walking around and just give them some inspiration of your own this year, and have a great year to everybody.
Thank you. I'm going to go to our new young ladies. Ms. Torres.
There is a football game on Friday, so I encourage you guys to all come out and support us, and all students to join the hype squad by SEA that we're starting this year, so shout out to SEA.
Good start, thank you. Ms. Matic?
Yes, thank you. Thursday morning, we have freshman orientation where we roll out the red mat and all the freshmen can come in. It feels super welcome, so that should be fun for all the freshmen, and we have everyone there cheering them on. And then later that afternoon, we have Eagle Kickoff where everyone can come and get their schedules, and the band and the cheerleaders perform, so I think it'll be a lot of fun. So come and get your schedule and start the year right. Thanks.
Thank you. I wanted to go with the girls next because now I'm going to go to Mrs. Sevesky, and I didn't want her to be able to say everything. Mrs. Sevesky?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would also like to offer my deepest condolences to the Suddeth family. It's a big loss in our community to lose Mr. Suddeth, and he touched so many lives, and we all feel it, but I'm sure not as much as they do. And so know that you're in my thoughts and prayers as you go through this very challenging time for your family. The back-to-school nights do start tomorrow night. Looking forward to seeing all of our kids, who I know are excited about getting started, so I would encourage parents to check out the Manassas City website, or your school's website, so you can know when your back-to-school nights and times are, as those should all be posted now. I'd like to welcome everyone to the 2015-16 school year. I know it's going to be a great year, and our staff, as exampleled in convocation yesterday, everyone was, it was a very exciting time, a very exciting day, and I got the impression of great enthusiasm by all the staff in Manassas City, so I'm looking forward to seeing all the things that will go on over the next 10 months. And last, I'd like to welcome our student liaisons. I'm particularly excited that they're here and that they will be able to help, give us their input on issues that are particularly related to the students in Manassas City, and I look forward to helping you if I can in any way, but thank you and welcome.
That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Williams?
Thanks. Good evening. My only comment, excuse my sore throat, please, my voice, my only comment is about Mr. Suddeth and his family. I express my condolences to the family. He worked with all three of my children at school, my daughter and I the summer, at summer school, and my older two kids. And the last time I spoke with him, I guess it was near the end of the school year, he asked me about how my kids were doing. And the measure of a man is the lives, or a woman, a person, are the lives that they touch, and he touched a lot of lives, so his loss will be deeply felt, and I really felt bad for our community, but I extend my condolences, like I said, and pray that they can get through this. That's all.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Albrecht?
Mr. Chair, thank you. I think every board member's touched on the thoughts, the prayers, that certainly we individually as well as collectively have for the Suddeth family. And it's a somber way to start the school year, but it really is what we need to be focusing on. Here it is, the 25th of August, who'd have thought that we're talking about the start of a school year? We're going to start before Labor Day, and next Monday, we'll have children in the schools, so I think we're all looking forward to an exciting year. So thank you.
Thank you. Just in case everybody wants to hear me. I spoke about Mr. Suddeth yesterday, I don't know that I can do it again. I will say that when I met him, that is just music to my ears. Really. Forty years ago, he's still important to me today, and I just want to make sure that any teachers that didn't hear it yesterday, how important they are to their students, and they will be 40 years from now even if they don't know it, because we've got lots of Coach Suddeths in our midst, and I just hope the rest of our teachers can learn from, have learned from him, and can continue to do that with the number of lives he's touched, and I'm not going to talk about it anymore. As long as we're on that subject, we also lost last year, Mr. Richard Guy, who is a local artist. You've seen his work even if you don't know it, and this last week, we, for some reason, we lost his son, Alan, who you may not know it, but you've seen his work as well. He kind of took over for his father. He's, was a very talented artist, and he's a 2000, I mean, a 1985, '84 graduate of Osborne. And as you're going down Center Street or Church Street, you can look up at the banners on the, on the lights, and those are Atlants. So keep Mrs. Guy in your thoughts and prayers, she's had a very hard time lately. And students are reminded.
Grades nine through 11.
Nine through what?
Grades nine.
Nine through 11. Not you guys, I wonder why I'm looking at you, I'll look at the camera. To pick up their tablets Thursday at Osborne from 12 to 8:00 p.m. Not all the tablets have been picked up, you need to get your tablets, we're starting school Monday.
Grades nine through 11.
Grades nine through 11. Nine through 11. Just doing what I'm told, people. Thank you.
Grades?
I think it's, wait, nine through 11. So much more fun to have fun. Citizens' comments, do we have any citizens that would like to speak? Beside you. But you can keep on speaking if you'd like. We'll go to the consent agenda. And where do I?
Where do we find that?
I need to make it up.
Under minutes.
Under minutes?
Yes, sir.
Can you find it?
Working on it.
Consent of minutes. And, but that'll be as modified.
This is the minutes, wouldn't it be the entire agenda?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, it should be.
The consent agenda?
Yeah. Please do that.
Mr. Chair, I move the school where the city of Manassas approved the consent agenda as presented.
No.
As modified.
Second. Thank you, Mr. Williams. Motion by Mr. Albrecht, second by Mr. Williams, to let the city of Manassas School Board approve the consent agenda as modified. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry six zero. Now I've got to put consent here. We'll get this down to an art eventually. And we're going to go on to dual immersion at Hayden Elementary. Dr. McGorrick?
Yes. Dr. Wilder has been working with her staff and has been looking at a model, a school within a school model for dual immersion, and tonight she's coming forward to kind of talk about where they are right now and the things that they are going, are planning to do this school, this school year as they continue their study and plans for their future.
And I do have two members of our immersion committee, my assistant principal, Ms. Kimberly Twine, and a parent representative, Crystal Levine, and her.
Entourage.
And her entourage. Her support, they're my cheerleaders, it's wonderful. So good evening, esteemed school board, Chairman Di Maria, Dr. McGorrick, thank you so much for having us this evening. We're here to share with you something we've been researching at Hayden, which is dual-language immersion. Oh, I forgot to open. A little bit nervous, I'm so sorry.
It's all right.
It's just us.
On television. Okay. So tonight, we'll share with you the benefits of immersion, including recent research. We'll share our idea of a school within a school immersion model program and a possible Manassas City schools progression model. We've outlined anticipated costs for professional development, as well as a timeline for potential Dual-language immersion, when begun in kindergarten, allows children to be more likely to develop native-like pronunciation and a greater ability to acquire additional languages later in life. If we begin a Spanish dual-language immersion program at Hayden, we'd be developing each child's full potential, helping them develop an appreciation for the global community, and foster flexible and creative thinking. Currently, our second language learners will leave Osborne speaking two languages, whereas our English-only students will leave speaking one. Creating a dual-language immersion plan that progresses through Mayfield, Metz, and Osborne aligns with the European model, which was adopted in 2002, and that ambitious goal is encouraging students to communicate in two additional languages upon high school graduation. In Europe, an average of 60.8% of students enrolled in secondary, excuse me, enrolled in secondary education were learning two or more foreign languages, and this ambitious goal provides European graduates enhanced career readiness opportunities based on their advanced language skills, and we'd like to bring the same opportunity to Manassas City students. Our immersion committee selected Spanish for two primary reasons. The first was that the number-one foreign language spoken in the United States is Spanish, having grown by 232% since 1980, and the second reason was that we thought it would match the community that we serve at this point in time, building both academic content vocabulary in our Spanish-speaking students who join the class while enriching the language skills of our English-speaking students. Another consideration for our committee is that Spanish is the second-most spoken language in the world, thus offering our students multiple opportunities in a global market. Research supporting dual-language immersion and developing bilingualism in children identifies key benefits, including the increased vocabulary development and brain function of students who are able to transfer learning content from one language to another. A 2010 study by Thomas and Collier identified several benefits for children who participate in dual-language schools in North Carolina. Students who did participate in those programs scored significantly higher in both reading and math than those children who did not. In 2013, Morales, Calvo, and Bialstop compared two separate studies that both investigated mono and bilingual children. In both studies, bilingual children outperformed monolingual children and could respond more quickly, access their working memory more easily, and they demonstrated executive functioning advantages. And more recently, only in July of 2015, Aliwade et al., the names are all up there, from the Georgetown Medical Center, further confirmed that people who speak two languages have greater executive function, as evidenced by more gray matter in their brain. It's a lot of research out there. Very impressive. So the Hayden immersion committee developed a school within a school model, as indicated by this graphic. Our first pilot year would consist of two to three kindergarten classes who have half a day of language arts and social studies taught entirely in English. The other half of the day would be taught entirely in Spanish and would cover math, science, and Spanish language arts. The other kindergarten classes in our school would be taught entirely in English. All specials classes such as art, music, and PE would also be taught in English. The hope would be that this model would then expand to first grade the following year and continue adding a grade level each year until there were two to three classes in each grade level using the dual-language immersion model. Once the program builds at Hayden through fourth grade, our hope would be that it would expand up through Mayfield, and then up to Metz, and then up through Osborne, where students would have the opportunity to take AP Spanish or begin a third language, so they could leave Manassas City schools fluent in three languages. And as you can see in Mayfield and Metz, they would have at least one class, a content area class, Spanish, possibly social studies, that would be taught entirely in Spanish throughout the year as well. As we consider any new program, it's essential to provide ongoing and relevant professional development to educate and support our teachers. We've contacted the Center for Applied Linguistics, and they specialize in immersion programs, and they would be able to provide ongoing professional development and any other necessary training we would need as we move forward in this endeavor. And as you can see, some of these line items have already occurred. We'd like to move forward with your permission to survey any Hayden parents with a four-year-old to determine interest in the dual-language immersion. Our immersion committee would like to continue to research, build, and develop a plan for hiring, enrollment, and registration. Professional development days have already been scheduled, but we'd like to finalize our plans with the Center for Applied Linguistics to confirm that they would be ready to provide these learning opportunities for our staff. And finally, we'd like to be able to hire Spanish-speaking teachers in the spring for the following school year to begin our kindergarten classes by replacing only those teachers who resign or retire through natural attrition. And actually, I already have two teachers that told me they'll be retiring after this year, so that's always a good thing. And so just in conclusion, we'd like to thank you for your time and consideration this evening.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments? Ms. Purdy?
So I have to tell you, I am a big fan of this idea. Both of my children went through an elementary school program, where they actually went to a school where they did have multiple languages taught at that same school. Now, you can have, both of my kids had the, you know, extreme experience. My daughter kept flipping through every single language they offered, my son stuck with one, and I will tell you, regardless of which way they went, both of them benefited tremendously from having that exposure. So I got to tell you, I really appreciate the hard work that you did, the advocacy for going down this road. Having been a host family to multiple foreign exchange students, I'm really sold on our kids being multilingual. So I do want to thank our parent advisor, and trust me, as a parent, we know exactly how it feels, so don't worry, we're all rooting for you. So I only have one question. So as you, as you progress, and I like the fact that you're looking for that transition all the way through graduation, because that's really where kids get their fluency, is that they keep sticking with it. Is there any intent to add more than just one language? I'd really highly like to encourage, let's not just stop with Spanish. There are other, other languages out there that, you know, depending on which career field you're going to go into, those other secondary languages are just as important.
At the elementary level, absolutely. We had talked about Mandarin, we had talked about all kinds of different options. This was just what our immersion committee had picked at this point in time. I, I think it's a tremendous opportunity for any student to be able to experience learning in another language. So no, we are not opposed to starting other languages.
But it's not being included in the future planning, or it is going to be taken on in the future planning?
May I answer? May I answer that?
Sure.
Usually in dual immersion, you have English and another language, so there is, if another school chooses to take this pathway, well then they, we could have a different dual immersion for another school.
Right.
Is that what you're speaking to?
I've seen multiple models. I'm really more interested in, are we just going to stop with Spanish, or are we going to continue to grow our plan so that we have more than one second language that we're offering?
Right, but this is one school. I don't, I don't know if you want. Are you talking about at Hayden doing more than one language?
No, because as I understood, you're encouraging them to continue once they get out of Hayden, so now you're really looking at a division-wide kind of vision, if you will, and so it sounds like no one really has actually thought about more than one language.
Can you go back to the other option, please? Yes, in order for them to receive credit for the language that they learned, we have to go through Spanish I, II, to show them to participate. So once they get to high school, there is the opportunity for a third language that we hope that they will decide to do. We can't mandate it, but we will be providing that opportunity.
I would love to be a part of a division immersion committee, because I think this would be wonderful to think about for the other schools, and I would support them 100%.
Exactly, and more than one second language is really what I was addressing.
Right, it shouldn't be just Spanish. And I, I only have five to six kindergarten classrooms, so if I had 100% interest, maybe, but, but no, I think, I think you're right, the way of the future, this just kind of would be a wonderful thing to consider.
Okay, great, thanks.
Overall, but thank you, and thank you for your support.
Good job.
Anyone else? Mr. Albrecht?
Thank you, sir. On this slide, I think to the point Mrs. Purdy was making, the implication is, at some point, Mayfield begins and starts offering Spanish I, II.
They have to master the Spanish language before we add a third one. They have to show credit.
I'm not going to add a third, I'm just saying. What curriculum changes and when do they take effect to impact Mayfield, that the kindergarten, the students leaving Hayden? Are now Mayfield students going to take what appears to be a curriculum there?
That is correct, in Spanish. They would have a Spanish class that they took all year in a core content, while they continue taking Spanish I, II, III, and IV, and English, because they have to master the language as if they were a native speaker.
Do we have, when do we need to have the programs at Mayfield and Metz to continue this, so we just haven't done one thing at the elementary school?
In year six. We have, we have until we reach year six to start rolling the program.
So start with kindergartners and, okay.
Because they're, yeah, they can only enter at the kindergarten level unless we have some second language speakers that were to come from somewhere else, and we, and they test it into the program, because you couldn't have a second grader enter into these classrooms speaking only English, because the structure would not be there. On these programs, that's how they, their entry point is kindergarten, unless they, you could have a native Spanish speaker who understood English and could take the English and Spanish test and score within an area, and then that's how they would enter. If you had an English-speaking student that was a second in Spanish, they would take a test and enter at that point. That's the, that's the tough part on the dual immersion, because they spend a half-day. When these kindergartners start, the courses, can you flip back one more, please? The content.
Sorry.
So when they, all day, when they take the math class, they will never hear their teacher speak English to them in math. In the first day, they start with Spanish, and they work with the kindergartners through it. And so it's, it takes a while, and when you reach that middle school level, they, it is our hope and desire that by the end of fourth grade, that they, they are fluent, and that we've worked with them the way we need to work with them, for them to take their full science class totally in Spanish.
Theoretically, at the end of the fourth grade, they're essentially polylingual in Spanish and English.
Right, but they won't have the grammatical structure and things that they need to have at the fourth grade level. That's right, and that's why we continue with it in what we're doing.
Anyone else? As long, nobody else? Girls? Nothing? We're starting in kindergarten, right? And would this, this is a silly question. By third grade, they'll hopefully be fluent in both languages?
They'll be fluent in both languages by the end of kindergarten.
Okay, I wouldn't be. So the SOL?
If you were five, you would.
Yeah.
I promise.
So the SOL won't be affected by this at all, only because they're smarter, because they're speaking two languages, or their brain is working better.
Their brains are working better.
Right, so they will, it should help those. And we're going to try and, we're going to hire Spanish speakers, teachers. Are they available? I mean, how difficult is that going to be?
They are. Mrs. Wingfield already gave me the name of a native Spanish speaker who is going to be graduating in May, so I, so we're sending feelers out and yes, looking for native Spanish speakers, absolutely.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, all right, I'm not done yet.
And actually, one of our teachers, Diana Han, the Agnes Meyer winner, she was a teacher in an immersion school, and she spoke Spanish all day long, so she's going to be a really great resource for us, to support us as we begin this.
So with dual language, our teachers will get smarter too?
How can they get any smarter than they are? They're amazing.
So our school board will get smarter than they are.
I have no comment.
Yeah, I know. Ms. Purdy?
No, sorry, Ms. Sevesky, she's on my left.
I just got a quick question. So since, from what I understand, the students that will be selected to be in the immersion program in kindergarten will be through a lottery system, is that correct?
That's the tentative plan at this point.
I mean, you have to have some way to figure out.
Yes.
How that's going to divide.
Yes.
So the question I have is, since there's not a way to know what the capability of these students are really beforehand, if a student is identified having a learning disability or some type of learning deficit, would they remain in the program?
Absolutely. We went and visited the Claremont School up in Arlington, and that was one of the things we had talked about with the principal. I had taken our whole team, and we went up there, and my special ed department lead was very interested in that, because it, that wouldn't be fair. And the principal up there, she had said, "That's a conversation you have with the families." She said, "But 99% of the time, the children stay in," and they do fine, they do very well, so it's, we don't anticipate having to limit our program based on that.
Because a lot of times, you don't know.
You don't know.
Really that they have a disability, not even in kindergarten, usually it's a little bit further.
Typically is.
Further in, so.
Usually second or third grade.
Thank you.
Ms. Kiefer?
I have one question. First, I applaud you, your staff, the parents who've been involved in this. I too am a big fan of the immersion program. I think when I think about the other parents who may not have a child in Hayden, I want to go back to the division-wide, you know, sort of strategy, because this is something I think almost every parent would want their child in, and so as we're thinking about the progression plan, I don't know if there has been, I heard you mention you'd love a division-
you mention you'd love a division-wide committee. Has that been talked about in this? Because I do think that continuum of education for all students is really important, and we're looking really forward to hearing what you all learn in this, but I'm just curious on kind of that progression, just a little more detail on that.
What are your thoughts, Dr. Saunders? Would this be something we could take to the principal's?
It's not really in her realm right now. And what we're trying to do, when you're rolling out a dual immersion program, it needs to come from the community, as well as the parents and the teachers. It's a lot of work, and I also want to clarify on the fluency of the kindergarten students, they're as fluent as our little kindergarten vocabulary is. So, we need to be-
I apologize, I didn't clarify.
Yeah. And so, it takes a lot of training, and she's going to have teachers at Hayden that prefer to remain teachers that teach English. So, when we look at the different languages and everything, it's something that they have to buy into and have that desire for. So, you know, we have principals right now that are looking at where they want to take their school, their schools. They were, you know, if, if all of our slots aren't filled, we can definitely look at students that, you know, wish to make, to transfer if there's vacancies and openings in our program. I, I understand where you're coming from, and I agree with you as well, but this is something that has to come from the staff. To mandate it, it won't work. And that's why the school, the school system, you'll find in most school systems that you have one, or two, or three schools, because it is a very challenging endeavor.
And I'm just curious about if the intervention strategies for those students who may struggle in this program don't work, what, what happens then? I mean, do we keep the children if they're falling behind in some of their academics in the program, or?
Oh, absolutely. Just like the students who are struggling in our regular English-only curriculum, we keep applying different interventions as we go, until we find the one that works for students. And every student is different, and their needs are all very diverse, and, and it's not anything we would ever stop. And I, I would never anticipate moving a child out of a dual-language immersion class because they're struggling. Our goal would be to help them and support them. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much. Looking forward to it.
Thank you.
See. See. That was Mr. Albrecht, I gotta give him credit. He doesn't get too many in there, so you gotta give him credit where it's due. Oh, I messed up. Let me see. Calm down, I'll be right there. Student Support and Administrative Support Services Annual Review of School Crisis Plans, Dr. McGuirk.
Yes, Ms. Thompson comes to us every year this time of the year, and, as a requirement, so that everybody is aware that we've kept it in our vision, and that we've talked this over with our staffs, and we're ready to open the school year. Ms. Thompson.
Okay, nice to be here this evening. Thanks for having me. I'd just, like you said, just to do the annual update, we have made some updates this year, so I want to go ahead and update that on you. As you know, we do unannounced lockdown drills every April, and it's a great opportunity to make sure that we all ready for lockdowns. We bring the fire department with us, and police, sometimes the police will come, but I really feel like we're really all prepared for lockdown drills. We do have a division-wide school safety committee that meets quarterly, and we look at safety across the division, including like our safety inspections of all the schools. We look at that data, we look at our survey data, we look at how we're implementing all of our safety programs. As you know, we continue to shelter in place in case there are any emergencies in the community. We're available to open Osborne, or open one of our other schools to service as shelter. We do have school safety coordinators at each site, and we have updated our school crisis and emergency management plans. And this year, we've made a change in that, we used to in the past have modified and limited lockdowns. We've done away with those, they're kind of confusing. I've been working very closely with Prince William in Fairfax, Loudoun County, Alexandria. We're just gonna have lockdown evacuation and shelter in place. And I've, staff will be getting all new cards this week with the change, and it just makes it more clear and concise. There's just, in an emergency situation, those are gonna be the avenues you would pursue based on the emergency.
Can I interrupt for one second?
You sure can.
Thank you. What, what, I know what evacuation is. Lockdown and shelter in place, which one's more severe, which one?
Lockdown would be the more severe one. Shelter in place, we could actually, we wouldn't be leaving our building, but we could continue instruction in classroom. Let's say that there's a bad weather event or something. You know, the fire chief may notify us and say, "I want everybody brought outside, I don't want anybody in trailers, there's some high winds," there's something like that. So, lockdown's the more severe, you know, but shelter in place, you can still continue instruction.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. And again, we continue to work on having a healthy environment. We do have go-bags, we have flip charts, we have emergency supplies. I'm continuing to meet with the school safety coordinators this week to make sure we're all ready to open up school next week and have a safe environment. Emergency management drills, each year, we're required by the code to have certain emergency drills. We do have to have fire drills once, once, during the first month, we actually have them every week, and then every month thereafter, we are required to have a fire drill. We are required to have two lockdown drills each year. We have to have one in the first 20 days of school, and we also have to have one within the first 20 days of January. And we continue to monitor those and ensure that all of our schools are doing that. We do an extra lockdown drill, we do an unannounced lockdown generally in April, just to ensure that our students are prepared at all times to be in a lockdown situation with that need arise. We have earthquake drills, that's gonna take place October 15th this year. We'll do the tornado drill on March 15th, and we continue to do tabletop drills with our crisis response teams, where every year, we bring a different scenario, so we make sure our staffs are prepared and know how to handle all sorts of different types of This year, all of our safety coordinators attended the Kasha Foundation and the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services. They hosted a briefing, a national school safety symposium. It was probably one of the best conferences I've ever been to. It took place at the Hilton Performing Arts Center. We had the retired principal from Columbine School there, we had a survivor from Virginia Tech there, share her story, and it just really empowered us, and we really felt like we were being very proactive in our school division with safety. This is something neat that we're working on, that I'm very excited about. It's called a threat and hazard identification and risk assessment. We've been asked to participate, this is the first time the city has done this, and all of the agencies within the city are working on this. What we're trying to do is look at all the risks that could happen to our Manassas city community, and we're looking really at our capacity building to be sure that we can handle all of these different types of scenarios. We're looking at like cyber attacks, we're looking at things like a dam break, and it's just been really interesting to have the whole community work together on this. We're trying to look at what resources we have, what actions would we take, and what app, you know, what impacts we would need to put into any sort of recovery planning. It's a four-step process. The first step is identifying the threats and hazards that could happen in our community. Then, we're developing these scenarios. We've developed about seven different scenarios now that we're working on, we just met last week. Then again, we're looking at our capacity, and then we're gonna apply those results, and as a community, look at what are the resources we need, what do we need to look at adding. The benefits to this, again, it better defines any risk that could happen in our community. We're looking at capacity building, very involved in emergency management, looking at this as a team with the fire, the police, and all of the agencies involved. And again, it's just gonna serve as a documentation for any funding request, and it's gonna aid in the development of training and exercises. As a school division, I participate monthly in a drill with the EOC, the Emergency Operations System, so we try to stay very current in all of our training. And again, I'm really proud of the fact that we have so many staff members in our school division that are CPR, AED, and first aid trained. We have 42 instructors in our school division now. Last school year, we ended up having 578 trained staff in our school division, and we actually trained, at the high school, they trained the 10th grade students, so there were 596 students trained, including the students that are taking a lot of those extra kind of classes that we, we train those students. So, it was a large number of students trained also. So, that's my annual update.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions or concerns? This is on-
You're up. Thank you, sir. This is just on the discussion agenda. Does the plan need to be approved, or is it just?
Pretty much, I'm just doing it the way John Barankey did it every year, and what the state just said, this, each year, bring it to the school boards, they're kind of aware, and it's a good way to make the public aware, it's kind of, I think, a lot of the understanding for this, is that then they know that you do have plans in place, and our kids are safe in schools. So, so pretty much, it's just, kind of just doing a review for you. And I provided you with the documentation, like our table of contents, with a lot of it being confidential information, you know, we kind of provide it to you all, just so you kind of know what are all the different venues that we have available in our emergency operation plans.
Anyone else?
The CPR training, is that required of our teachers now by the state?
It is, within a five-year period. Matter of fact, we've got, we've been doing a number of trainings the last couple of weeks, and we've got a pretty big training this Thursday, but yeah, it is required now for relicensure. So, and it's, it's working out very nicely, and I really feel very positive that, it's kind of nice to know if an emergency could happen in the school, that there's so many people there trying to take care of it. It makes me feel really, really positive, you know?
Okay, good, I'm glad you do.
What's that?
I'm glad you do.
Yes, yes.
It just seems, to me, it just seems something else that the state has put on our teachers, and I want them to teach, and, I don't know, that's fine. I appreciate you doing what the state requires us to do.
That's right, that's right, that's right.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Technology and Communications, the mobile app, Dr. McGuirk.
Yes, Ms. Radford has been working all summer long to bring this app into fruition that will actually make it easier for parents to communicate with us and find information. And so, I'm excited to have her share what she's been working on.
Thank you, Dr. McGuirk. So, I get to come in a different capacity tonight. Good evening, board members, so good to see everyone tonight. And yes, I will give a nice little overview of the new MCPS mobile app that we are very excited about. As you know, a part of our beliefs in the strategic plan talks about being open and proactive in our communication efforts with our community. Certainly, we are all in support of student success. I think that the app will give everyone, our stakeholders, a greater, a greater access to a lot of the information that is already out there, but also in a concise way, consolidated, all utilizing some of the tools that they already have. You can go ahead, Lee. I would like to note that, one of the reasons, I had someone ask me the other day, why would we even want a mobile app? Because we have a website, we have our Facebook, we have our Twitter, it's just something else to add to the plate, or are you sure that people will utilize it? Well, one of the things that's exciting to me about this is that our stakeholders, holders use diverse communication platforms to stay engaged and connected. A lot of us rely on our mobile devices. I have been guilty of turning around and going home if I left my phone at home. I mean, you know, so we, this is the way that we stay connected to the world. And so, one of the things that I really, really like about this is that we're going to show our families, our staff, that this is another tool, if they're not at home, sitting in front of their desktop, able to access the website, or, you know, their school websites, et cetera, that they will be able to find isolated information, or specific targeted information that they want to know about the school division right on the mobile app. So, what will the app do? It centralizes information that is readily accessible to our stakeholders. Some, some people have specific areas that they like to visit on a, on a daily basis. News, calendars, directories of the schools will all be right there, contained inside the app, so they can get to it right at a single touch with their finger. It provides a personalized experience, and I really like that aspect, because people can get the information that they want when they want it. And so, we, I'll demonstrate a little bit, I have some screenshots that are gonna come up, where I can show you that, the areas that people will be able to access. So, here are some of the screenshots. Right now, the app is available, or will be available, in the Apple App Store, and also on Android devices with Google. It is free, which we're very excited about. And what, it's, once it's made live, this is what people will see. So, they'll be able to go on, and it'll pull in the top stories that are trending on our website right now. Anything that's streaming in from our social media will also filter through there. And if you look on the next screen, all they have to do is just kind of swipe over, no, not yet, not yet, the second graphic that's there. That shows you the various icons that people will see once they download the app. And you can see that we have some of the areas that people frequent regularly, like that PS is the parent portal for Power School. So, the fact that people don't have to go to different screens on the website or anything, it's right there, it's secure, because all they have to do is log in with their Power School login that they've already been assigned. Also, right next to that, on that third row, is My School Bucks. A lot of people use that to pay for their, their children's lunch or meal plans, so it's readily accessible. Also, being able to access information to contact our staff will be housed in the directory. And then, on the second, on the third screen, all of our social media will be contained in one area that they can easily access. Go ahead, Lee.
Okay, on that one, you said to contact staff, where, oh, that's a directory.
Directory.
Keep going.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so, under the calendar option, as you can see, I just picked a random date, and you have information there in this example from Osborne High School. Well, what people will be able to do using the little spinning wheel at the top, is they will be able to customize what they want to integrate into their own personal calendar. So, if I have a student at Osborne, I have one at Metz, I have one at Hayden Elementary, and I don't really want to get information about what's going on at the other schools, I can simply go over to the other side and set up my calendar to personalize it the way that I want it. It's color-coded, it comes right into my calendar, and I can choose which one of my children's schools that I receive information for. So, that's a nice example that I think people will be able to utilize. It also works in that same way with news. So, if you only wanted news from the district level in a particular school, you can go in and make that selection as well. So, when it comes to the directory, as you can see, all of our schools are listed there, our school board is listed there. And it's all contained in a single place. For instance, if you go to our website, which like I said, will not go away, because someone in Arizona or some other place that's interested in coming to Manassas, certainly, they will probably go to our website first, but our stakeholders, who are immediately right here as a part of our family, I believe this will be very, very useful for them, because at a single screenshot, they will be able to go to any school and select one, which I chose Hayden Elementary tonight, since they were featured as our guest tonight. And the phone number, the address, the website is right there, all on the same screen. And then, if they wanted to contact the principal, the assistant principal, once our teachers are here and the directory of staff is uploaded, they will click on that, and they will be able to email our staff right away.
And obviously, if they click on the phone number, the phone will call, right?
Right, you can call, yeah, right from your device. I would also like to note that there is an option for people to opt-in to receive notifications, like text alerts about inclement weather and other news, you know, report cards are due, or anything like that. They will be able to go in and customize what kind of alerts they would like to receive as well, so that it'll pop up on their screen right there on the device. And it's free, again, that's what we're most excited about. We're expecting it to launch in September, and we certainly will let all of our stakeholders know exactly how they can go out there and get it. It won't- how they can go out there and get it. It won't cost them a dime in there, whether they have Android devices or Apples. And if you go to the next screen, you'll see that many ways that we'll let our public know that it's available on all of our communication vehicles that we use, our social media, our Connect Five email and phone notification, all the school newsletters. We're going to certainly do a blitz to let everybody know that it's ready, and I really think it will add value to their school experience with their kids.
So that's it in a nutshell. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Questions? Ms. Albrecht?
Can we just review real quick how the My School Bucks works? Because that's e-commerce, and obviously, people could have concerns about privacy of their banking information.
You actually can do it right now. I am a parent that uses that as well, and My School Bucks has a link on their website that's secure, and that's actually what you're using. They also have an app, and it's just integrated into there, so you're still logging in with your username and password.
We're just accessing an existing third-party app. Okay.
Correct.
So we didn't integrate any kind of e-commerce. That's...
No, not at all.
Anyone else? Mrs. Sibeski?
Thank you very much for the work in doing this. I think it really does help in our strategic plans, goals of communication. It pulls a lot of things together, centralizes a lot of information, and it definitely, I'd be interested to hear what our students have to say, because I think that these are things that they are very familiar with. I know for myself that sometimes on your portable devices, trying to access individual websites can be difficult, so this app is actually very helpful for a lot of reasons in that, as well as centralizing a lot of information. Something I've heard for years was about our calendars and not being able to know what's going on without a lot of work to figure out what's going on at one school compared to another school compared to another school. So this obviously solves that issue, and I appreciate all the work and effort, because I'm sure there's a lot that's gone into this. But I do, do appreciate it, and I do feel like, I said, that it helps further our strategic plan and communication. So thank you.
I would just like to say, I think it's very cool. It is very cool, actually. Like, you can go on, and I saw that you can look at the lunch menus, the bus schedule, because I know that this year, I'll be driving, but what if I can't? I can go and look at the schedule, and I can say, "Oh, should I pack my lunch?" I think it's cool, not, just not only for parents, but for students. I get...
I do, too.
Like, I know, I hope a lot of students will use it. I, I don't know how many will, but I, I will tell them that it's so cool. And when you did say app, I was like, "Oh, like, what could this be?" But it is cool. I tell you that. It's actually really cool. It has a lot on there. I can go on Power School. I don't need five apps anymore. I think that's really, like, it's nice.
And I think what's really great about it also is, just like I showed you with the calendar, the food menu will go into the calendar exactly the same way. And so if you wanted to be able to integrate that into your personal calendar, what's for lunch or breakfast on a particular day, you can do that as well. It's very, very easy to customize.
Yeah. And I know there's a lot going on at all the schools, so it's cool. I mean, I know I do a lot, so just to look and say, "Well, this night, there's this and this and this," like, all in one thing, I, it's very nice.
Anyone else?
I think it's great. The first thing that I open in my phone is Power School, like, every minute of the day. So having that app, I can, like, I can go on Power School, and I can see what's for lunch, and I can see what's going on in the school. I think a lot of students will utilize it and actually click on the other stuff that's actually there. And, yeah, because there's Power School, and everyone checks Power School, so.
Thank you. No, I was going to say it's cool, but somebody took that word. Between the lunch menu and the calendar and the news, is that all on you to update that?
My office.
Your office?
But it speaks to the website. It speaks to our social media, so it's up to us to make sure that that information is up to date and current, and then the app will pull that information in.
Okay, so the app will take the information from the websites?
Mm-hmm. The areas that we designate.
From the enterprise application, whatever that might be.
I don't know what he just said, but that's what's going on.
So you may want to talk about how Ms. Gibson is going to be watching the calendars across the division.
Oh, yeah.
So that when the parents see those calendar, that the dates are accurate. That's how, that's how, that's where the dates come from.
Yes, that's correct. You know, for information that's at the schools, we're working in our office to confirm with the schools that the information is correct, mainly because it is being shared out with the world, and, and we don't want any discrepancies. So, yes, that accountability piece is done in my office.
Right.
Ms. Chair, it's back to the old garbage in is garbage out. So we've got to make sure the source data is right.
That's correct.
But something to think going forward, the bus application, as I'm sitting here thinking of a real-time GPS transponder on the bus, and to be able to predict when the bus is going to be at a bus stop, both for a student and a parent, there's some neat things we can get to, and the kids are sitting there going, "Yeah, yeah, I wouldn't have to sit outside in the cold." So there's some neat ways this could go. I didn't say cool. You like that?
Yeah.
You know, in the future.
And this is a start, because it really does have the opportunity to expand and grow to some other areas that we're doing in the school division.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Action Agenda, Superintendent's Evaluation Goals for 2015, 2016. This is what we spent last Wednesday on, and before we get too far ahead, I'd like to thank Mr. Williams for taking the reins and getting this prepared for where we are tonight. Dr. McGorick?
I've taken all the suggestions that, well, we had one suggestion, actually, a reminder that from Mrs. Purdy, and I added that at 1.3E is the addition that we had. Do you want to? Yeah, oh, please. Thank you. I was looking at my screen. So I think at this point, would be any discussion from the board?
Are there any additional questions or comments from what we've done already?
Ms. Chair, one question about, about that addition is, because it does have a date listed, is that a realistic date that that can be accomplished?
Well, what that amounts to is that we know that we need to, we will need to survey staff to determine. Dr. Saunders, this is your project. Why don't you come up and explain that? In fact, we even met with some business people today to talk about how we could make this work. The reason for the January 31st is the minimum number. We would continue working on that, but people need to be able to apply for potential jobs.
Right.
And that's why we want some kind of date where we have some to offer. That's just reasonable. I'm good. But I'd love to hear what you have to say.
No, I, we do think it's reasonable. We have started to make many connections in our business community, not only in the city of Manassas, but in our surrounding area, and started to look at where those options can be, and it really is a timing piece, because without knowing those options, then we can't get, people need to be able to plan for their summer activities fairly early. We start planning summer curriculum writing all the way back in December, so that people can plan for whether they want to teach summer school, whether they want to do an externship. We had some good conversations today with some of our local business persons, and they are very interested in helping us connect with those businesses that may have opportunities. And they really had some good insight for us.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, I'd actually like to make a comment. I really appreciate you guys working on that. And for folks who are listening in, if you weren't there on Wednesday, the request that we asked was, as part of the STEM project, was not only provide STEM experiences and exposure to the students, but also provide that for the teachers, so that they can actually incorporate real-world experiences when they're in the classroom. And I'm going to maybe put Mr. Williams on the spot here and give you a for instance for why I am so pleased that you guys really jumped on that in a hurry. There was a teacher who worked with a student last year in, in the high school, where he worked with a company that allowed this student to do some independent study, and, and that particular student did a lot of, of product review design work with, with Mr. George in his electronics class. And I guess I probably ought to do a shout-out. The company that actually donated all the equipment to the high school was Bose. So, so part of what this student did was provide information backs to Bose to say, "Okay, you know, I built this speaker system and created this, the circuit for this, this speaker system, and here's some of my recommendations for improvements on your design." He actually found a couple flaws and ways to improve it. He then got a summer internship, and this is where I'm, you know, going to give a shout-out to Mr. Williams' wife at her pediatrician practice. And the student actually, through having learned the skills through the STEM, working with the teacher who was a, who actually had real-world experiences, as well as working with the, the company from Bose, actually worked through the process with the pediatrician's office, and because of the skills he learned, said, "You know what? If we change this process this way, you guys could save thousands of dollars." And they did. And so when, when teachers can bring that stuff into the classroom, it's amazing what our kids can do. And then that just gives them a lot of self-confidence and then build skill sets that they're going to take with them to the rest of their lives. So, so I really, really applaud what you guys are doing, because I think this is going to be another one of those gifts that keep on giving.
Thank you, Ms. Purdy. Anyone else? Sir?
I'll just kind of elaborate, because it's a fantastic thing. In a former life, when I was with the Education Foundation, I was able to hire the art department or the art teachers from Osborne High School, because we had a project at the time called McGo, because, wow, we're going to actually do art on Macs. And we put them in our proposal center, and what it allowed to happen is the art teachers to gain a real-world understanding of the application of a process or a technology. It's one thing to teach us, another thing to give real-world practical applications to students, and that's what we all crave today in the, in learning. You know, this is really nifty, but why is it important? So they were able to go back in the classroom and say, "Here's why it's important, and by the way, I did that." So it's a real powerful thing to be able to say, "Here's how to do it, and here's why." So, you know, it's going to allow us, I think, to increase the level and certainly the, the significance with which we teach certain classes.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair, I move the school board of the city of Manassas approve the superintendent's performance goals for the 2015-16 school year as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Albrecht, second by Mrs. Sibeski. Are there any other comments, discussion? You okay? Oh, I thought you were pointing somewhere. All right. Motion by Mr. Albrecht, second by Mrs. Sibeski, that the school board of the city of Manassas approve the superintendent's evaluation goals for 2015, 2016 as presented. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Carry six, zero.
Mr. Chair, I move to adjourn.
Motion by Mrs. Sibeski, second by Mrs. Kiefer, to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Is there any discussion now that we're done?